Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Rutland Town Select Board Regular Bi-Weekly Meeting. This is Tuesday, July 18th. We have Kurt Hathaway here. I'm Mary Ashcroft, Sharon Russell, and on the line is Matt Geddes. So we have four out of five select board members. And let's, if you would all join me for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
If you could please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection, please. We lost a neighboring police department's officer, Jessica Ebbinghaus, and we send our thoughts and prayers for those of us so inclined to her family and to our colleagues in the city. And we also remember a longtime ballot clerk here in Rutland Town, Norma Byathrow. So a moment for those two good women, please. Thank you. Okay. Minutes of the meeting of July 5th. Is there any motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any additions, deletions? Discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. No one's opposed. I'm going to circulate. Okay. Next on the agenda is board member announcements. Sharon, have you got any?
Nope.
Kurt?
Nothing.
Matt, any announcements?
Nope.
Okay. Next update from the Select Board Chair. A couple of things. First of all, thank you to all of Rutland Town's first responders. I think the events of the past week have, on several fronts, have made it clear how much we owe to those folks who show up. Our police department, our fire department, our highway department folks. And we're very grateful. We don't, and our emergency management people, we don't say it often enough, and perhaps we should, but thank you. You're serving us, and we are very, very grateful for your service. I had the delightful privilege of visiting West Rutland's carving studio last week and saw the bench that has been prepared for us by the students there, ranging from age 13 to 17. The bench will be placed at Northwood Park. It's a gift to the town. We did agree to make a donation, so we'll talk about sending a check, maybe presenting a check. Because we also talked about the possibility of getting the bench at Northwood in time to have townwide celebration dedication ceremonies. So they were pretty excited about that because they've had other dedication ceremonies and, you know, sometimes nobody shows up. But we said a lot of people would show up for this one. So more on that, but we'd like Mike Rowe, Rec Department, and Dave Sears, Highway Department. We do need to construct a base, or not we, it's sort of like you, need to do a base to receive the bench. And we've got to have the final place where you do want to put it, because I think there was some discussion about it. Yeah, well, Rec Department or Rec Committee should come up with a recommendation, right? Okay.
Highway Department and the Rec Department.
I'll be up to see you, Mike.
Yeah, I've heard that.
I'll come up and see you. You can show me what you think.
Okay. Over the past week, we, I have signed the contract for the construction of the public safety buildings. So hopefully we got, there were two original copies. I signed both, and did we get ours signed back? Okay, we need to get ours signed back. Yes, okay. So there's no delay on the town's part for moving along on that project. And last thing, we had a request which the Select Board agreed to, to provide some backup police services to Rutland City for that horrendous week where they were down a total of, I think, five officers. So we did some, provided a couple of officers there to help them out. So thank you to our police department for helping out our neighbors. Okay, that's all I had. And any questions from the floor or public comments? No one in the room? Is there anyone zooming in who is a member of the public who wishes to make a comment or ask a question, who is not otherwise on the agenda? No? Okay. Let's move along. We'll start with Marty Wasserman, Emergency Management Director for the town.
This will be very short. Did anything happen in town? Actually, quite honestly, not a lot. We're fortunate.
That's good.
We are very fortunate. I learned a lot of things during this time. What more things I need to learn, what more things I need to do. Also, I need, I was hoping Chris would be here, but I'll have to talk to Chris. Because one thing that we did was, it isn't really designated as a shelter. It's designated as Emergency Operations Center, and that's Station 2. But I had to open a shelter Monday night, because we sheltered one lady, which I'll get into more about that. So we got to talk about officially having someplace that we can consider a shelter and having it supplied.
In our emergency management plan, because I think we, we said we would use the open door mission.
Right.
So we could have called you and said?
Absolutely, anytime.
I know that's considered one of our shelters, but I didn't.
That's our backup shelter. Our shelter is the school.
The school primary.
School is the shelter and the mission is the secondary.
So, I mean, opening the school for this one lady didn't make a whole lot of sense.
So you send her to the mission.
There's somebody there anyhow, right?
Oh, we're staffed 24/7.
I'm sorry, I did not think of that.
That's okay.
My fault. Like I said, I'm learning a lot of.
We're all learning on this one, yeah.
Yeah.
I learned it's hard being in the field. And just to give you an example, I counted up during this period of time, there was 120 emails that I had to deal with from emergency management, whether it was local, regional, or it was from the state. It's just one after another. So to give you a recap, my preparation really started from notification on the 7th. And I was doing some looking at the places around town just to make sure that things weren't plugged and, you know, I was looking around myself. And then I had to make reports, you know, that's when the reporting started. So I was looking and reporting, as you can imagine. Our first actual call, which came into the fire department, was on Monday night at 8:00. The first call was, where I expected it to be coming from, close to the junction of West Proctor Road and Business Route 4. It's the blue house to the east that sits lower. And they were the first ones flooded, about 8:00. 868 Business Route 4, the house was flooded. There was so much water, there was not, the fire department couldn't pump them out, and there was still water coming in. So it was just a lost cause. But we got Green Mountain Power there to shut power. And there were 14 members of the fire department that responded to that. After that call, actually, I worked with Green Mountain Power from additional neighbors, thinking ahead of time what should be cut out, because they were going to flood. And it was amazing. Just looking at, there's that business that sells trailers there at Business Route 4 and West Proctor Road. They were in the water waist-high, pulling these trailers out. I mean, it was incredible watching that. And they wanted, they said their power was good. It was high enough in the building and everything. They didn't have Green Mountain pull them. They had their lights on, which lit up the intersection well, which was good. Highway Department was there, and they closed West Proctor Road for us. They put up barricades and stuff, and that was great. About 10:00, we had a call to assist from Proctor where we, they wanted us to block Route 3. We didn't have any flooding on any part of Route 3 in our town, but it was flooded in Proctor where you couldn't get through. So we, fire department was blocking Route 3 at Route 4, and then I had to move. We actually, for the night, blockaded it on Route 3 and the East Proctor Road. So this way, if anybody was on East Proctor Road, they weren't getting through to Proctor. And if somebody was on one of them, they could turn around and go back, so it was a U-turn there. And those were all open that night. So that was at 10:00. Then at 2:30 in the morning, we got, someone was out walking his dog and smelled propane. So we went and we found that the pump station on Route 3 and Business Route 4, the pump station down there, within the gated area, the propane tank was flooded. So it had broken loose, and the propane was venting. There wasn't a lot to do there. We notified Howard Burgess, and for that call, we had five firemen respond. I do want to mention some attaboys. When we were on Route 3, something I didn't realize at the time, but you know, you have guardrails. In certain places, you have guardrails, and the guardrail stops, and then guardrail starts. One of those places, I never noticed before, had a mailbox. And Adam Lanfeer was checking these things out, and he found that there's a house back off of Route 3, right by the railroad tracks, that you cannot see from the road. You go way back on this driveway, and then behind a row of trees is this house. And we evacuated a woman there, and we also evacuated some other people, but they had places to go. But this woman didn't. My thought was, I didn't think of the shelter. So the school, I wasn't going to open up the school for shelter. So even though Station 2 is Emergency Operations Center, we brought the lady in there to shelter her for the night. So I thank Adam Lanfeer for his thinking and finding these people, but I want to thank, in public, Billy Joe Mills. Billy Joe, a member of the fire department, without any coercion, without even being asked. She, just everybody from the fire department was leaving when we were done, and Billy Joe was still there. And finally, I asked her, are you going home? And she said, no. She, on her own, the thought of having a woman there and leaving me alone with her in the building, she wasn't going to do that. So she stayed the entire night as well to make sure that we were safe. And there was no accusations that could be made and stuff. But it was tough on us. It was tough on this poor lady because she was just sitting in the chair all night. It was amazing that 5:30 in the morning, the three of us went to her house. And her house is built on a slab. And you can see where the water had been up on all four sides, almost to the slab, but it didn't get that high. The air conditioning was still on, the lights were still on, the clock in the house. Obviously, the power had not gone out because it had the right time on it. And so the water never reached it, but we kept her. The preceding days, I've made tours of the town. One of the places that amazed me was Silver Birch. Silver Birch condominiums, as you know, is Meadow Lake Drive and East Proctor Road. No, yeah, East Pittsford Road.
Yeah.
And Meadow Lake Drive, and it sits down in a hole with, East Pittsford Road is higher than the roof of these condominiums. And I said, oh, boy, this could be a real disaster. I said, nothing, absolutely no danger there. And I got to.
There's a place for the water in the puddle up there.
And I got to think that.
If the dam broke, don't come on.
Green Mountain Power lowering the dam, you know, lowering the dam there. I think they brought it down a good six feet. So there wasn't real any rush. And the other thing I think I, I saw from my driving around was places that in 2011 had been washed away and rebuilt were reinforced really, really nice. So they didn't get attacked so much. So other places got washed out and stuff. So the town really fared well. I learned a lot. There are things I didn't know. There's things I learned. There's things I got to learn. So all in all, we did well. As an aside, just my own education, I took a ride myself down to Ludlow and said, how the hell they could deal with this is beyond me.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't have had a clue. I mean, it's just total devastation down there. So, thank you. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Marty, for your work. We appreciate it.
Oh, one other thing. Angie was there, and I forgot to mention, Angie was there that night. She helped with blocking Route 4. And the state finally came and damned it. Angie did real well, because there was some guy on the side of the road that was arguing about, he was going to drive through it. And he and Angie were driving, and I said to him, finally, I said, you want to drive through it, you'd be, totally be my guest. But if you get stuck, don't expect us to come get you, because you're doing it on your own. We're not taking any liability in this. He turned around and left, but Angie was handling him very nicely, and she was an asset. So we have some good people in town. And the highway, the guys from Highway, I'm sorry. The two, the two guys that came from Highway, it was like, what do you want us to do? Anything you want, we're going to do. So it was real team effort between the police department, the fire department, the highway, and emergency management. It just worked out for the talents of the best, so.
So can you do something with all of those emergency management folks who were flooding you with emails and us, too? I wasn't sure what to do. I mean, we were, there were so many coming through that you didn't know. You know, you couldn't, if, if we had had a real emergency, we would have had to be dealing with the real emergency and not the paperwork, so.
Well, that's exactly what was happening.
Yeah.
I was up at emergency management this afternoon, talking to people up there. And poor Maggie, she's our current rep from regional planning. I mean, that was a trial by fire. What she got into, and she managed to get through and is getting through, because she still has work to do.
Yeah.
So we talked quite a bit today, and then she said, she's going to Springfield Saturday. And I said, well, you can get through Ludlow, because she was worried about that. So, but it's, it's a problem knowing what should be sent, what doesn't need to be sent, and what can be encapsulated in a couple of emails down to one or two.
Yep.
There's learning that she has to do with that, but. And then it was myself, knowing what had to be answered, and what I was going to answer, and what I was going to ignore for the time being. Now I'm catching up on them. Oh, you mean, I'm over the timeline? Sorry, I was busy, you know, so.
Any Select Board questions of our Emergency Management Director?
No, I think you've done a good job, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
I don't have a question, Mary, but I wanted to thank Marty. And also, I wanted to point out how much better the operation worked with a, when, when the town finally separated, the Emergency Management Director person from the fire department and the fire chief. During Irene, the town, well, prior to Irene, the town thought it best that I wore both of those hats. And it's impossible to do both of those jobs, because the fire department has so much to do that you don't have time to handle the stuff, the emergency management. And I'm glad our town has finally seen the light, and they were able to make the change so that we have two individuals that can work together and get multiple jobs done at the same time. It's very interesting in listening to Marty that, so much like Irene, the places that flood, those little houses along the Flori Plaza area there, as soon as a creek comes over the bank, they've got water in the basements. You know, that's habitual. That's always there. But it was really nice that Marty was able to do his job and not have to worry about managing a fire department at the same time. So a good job by the town to finally realize that, and a top-notch job by everybody in the town pitching in and, and working together that night. Thanks a lot, Marty.
Thank you, Joel.
Yes. Joe Donardo, our fifth Select Board member, is on the line as well, so can add that. Thank you very much, Marty. We appreciate it, and thanks to all who helped.
Don.
You are Don. Don't forget to put in a timesheet for your time.
What's that?
A timesheet.
I don't know, somebody's got to explain.
For your time. Ed Dumas, tell me.
If I, with all due respect, if I may leave, I have company at my house in Carolina. I'd like to.
Have a good time.
Get out while you can.
Chief Dumas, good evening.
Good evening. I have a couple of things for you tonight.
Yes, please.
First off, reference the last 10 days have been pretty active in the city. On the Monday, we assisted, and then on Friday, we had another incident. It was tragic, to say the least. And all law enforcement is affected. Our hearts grow to the, the family of Jessica. There's no words to say to them at this point. To get into business here.
And I just want to say that it's September, and I don't know the date. We are having the Mission Golf Tournament, and it's in Jessica's name.
Okay, thank you.
So if you guys want to put a team together, we'd love to have you.
Okay.
I talked to her grandfather, because I know Bob, and he was grateful, so.
Yes. Bob's a good man.
Yeah, he is.
So for the calls for service, we had 58 calls for service. We had 30 traffic stops. Bear with me. I think I'll say one thing. Officer Plakas has taken it upon himself to enforce the sex offender registry list. So when people are out of bounds or not where they're supposed to be, or not checking as they're supposed to be, he takes it upon himself to check with the people that need to be checked with, find the people, do search warrants, write the affidavits, charge them, lodge them, whatever it takes, he's right on it all the time. I thank him for that.
Okay.
We had, wasn't real active. Top 10 cases were DUI, grand liar, snee, unlawful mischief, felony, sex offender registration, and that was it. One of each. We did, Lynn has, she was on vacation. She came back, so we had a little difficulty trying to catch, trying to catch up. They got some new dispatchers and Westminster, Westminster Minister, and they have, they don't put down the right addresses. One was one Hanaford Drive for a complaint at Hanaford's. So we had, so Lynn's having to go through all their, every case they dispatch her to find out which one's happened in the town of Rutland or where they're dispatching to. So if you look at this sheet here, the monthly stat sheet we keep for the South End, see that we have a total of 117 cases, 89 of those were in the South End. So that's like 76% of our calls came from the South End last month. Have those numbers there. That's all I have for those two. Any questions on either of those two?
Questions from Select Board members? Kurt, no? Sharon?
Oh, other than, I'm proud of the team we have in this town.
Yeah.
It's leading a good group, Ed.
A bunch of people, that's for sure.
Yep.
The other last thing was the estimate, this is on Tahoe, there was added cost of getting outfitted with everything but the radio equipment. We're going to pull the radios out of my cruiser and stick it in that. But that was, the uplift was, I guess, $13,100.
Okay, we had talked about, did we approve it last meeting?
You approved the cruiser, but I said we'd get.
We knew there was more.
I planned to sell my current cruiser and put that money back in this to cover, to help cover the costs of the outfitting the emergency equipment that goes on the vehicle. I just wanted by you to get approval for that extra cost at this point in time.
Okay. So this is from a government municipal. Yeah, it's, it is, I mean, they're careful to say it's still an estimate, and the actual cost may change once project elements are finalized. You'll remember, we approved the $44,758.25. An estimated additional amount now of $13,100 is for the uplift, which is all of the equipment and, except for the radios.
Right. Light siren, push bumper, all the things that go on it.
Okay. For a grand total of $58,858.25. And I believe the plan was to take this from, refresh my memory.
Say again.
Where is the money coming from?
It's the initial cost of cruisers coming from the initial $75,000 we got from the.
The Cortina.
Cortina.
Okay.
And the rest, the other 13, I probably will come out of our, I have to look at my budget line, probably our equipment line. I'll have to look.
Boy, Mary?
Yeah, Joe.
I would suggest that we use the money, all of that from that $75,000 to pay this and not use Eddie's money. I mean, we're early into this new budget, and why, why use his equipment money for this when we have the other? I mean, we don't really have anything earmarked for that other money. And let's, let's, let's spend it on, on this, this purchase and the equipment needed for this cruiser. And that way, who knows, you know, we're only two weeks into the, the new budget. So I would sit on our money and use, use the other guy's money. He gave it to us.
So can I treat that as a motion?
Yeah, and actually, when, when we originally did this and made this, if this was, goes way back to February or March, when I made the initial motion to use that money to buy the cruiser, I was under the impression it was a fully dressed new car or truck or whatever, and it's whatever was needed. So I, but if you would like it as a motion, to clarify, then I will make it as a motion that we pay for all the expenses for this new car from that $75,000 that we received and save our tax dollars for an emergency or something else.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded by Kurt. Discussion. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion's unanimous, so you're all set.
I think, thank you very much. I believe that is all I have for you folks tonight.
Any questions of our town police chief?
No questions, but my sincere thanks for their dedication to their job. For coming through, the last couple of weeks have been really tough on them, and they have still managed to keep above it. And, and I really appreciate the efforts everybody's been putting in. So thank you, guys.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Is John Paul Fagnant on? Okay. Barbara Neus Pulling, Town Planning Commission.
Good evening.
Dana Peterson here is here, too, from the Planning Commission, so.
Yeah, a little moral support.
Okay, we dumped a lot of stuff on you two weeks ago.
So, yeah, so the Planning Commission looked at both those renewable projects. The wind one, which was kind of a surprise, is a surprise because it's very small, so it's on this faster track. small, so it's on this faster track, track through the state. Um, and, uh, we had some email correspondence, uh, about that one. We couldn't get the developer or Preston or son to the meeting. Um, and we had some questions about the, uh, noise level from the blades. And actually Dana had an app on his phone, um, that, uh, could take the number that they have in their application for decibels and relate it to something that we would understand.
Right, right, yeah.
And it was a refrigerator at two hundred feet?
Yeah.
Something like that. Um, so, not very loud. Um, it's also very forested up there, so, uh, the sound's not gonna go anywhere. And visually, it, there will be two towers at a hundred feet tall, um, about forty feet wide, I think, but it is forested, it's up by itself pretty much. So, um, we kind of agreed with the aesthetic, um, evaluation too, that there, there wouldn't be much, uh, for surrounding.
So, for those on the, the phone, or just a refresher, this is the, uh, Preston Billings property off Quarterline Road at the south end of town. Um, he's my brother-in-law, so I'm not gonna participate in the discussion or in any decision-making, but just put it in perspective there, folks. That's, that's where it is.
Yeah, and because it's on this faster track, uh, it has a public comment period, and then it pretty much goes, the state pretty much makes the decision, up or down. So, the public comment period, um, ends the nineteenth, and, um-
Tomorrow. That would be tomorrow, yeah.
Tomorrow.
Does the planning commission have any recommendation for the select board?
No, we support the project.
Okay. Planning commission supports the project. Any further questions, comments on this one, or shall we? Joe?
Um, so at this point, I mean, do we have to make some kind of motion and move, let them move forward, or are they just moving forward if we don't object?
I think the latter. We have an opportunity to participate and be heard.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought from the initial paperwork they sent us, I mean, they gave us the noise levels, uh, distances to dwellings and houses and everything like that. I think it's a very well-prepared project. It's, it's not huge, um, so, you know, I don't have any, I didn't have any objections with it, and, um, and I still don't, and, and it sounds like the planning commission, you know, done their job, and they, they seemed okay with it. So, I, I think we should just, you know, that once the public comment period is over tomorrow, they'll probably proceed with this, and somebody will get a little payback out of land that they own, which is okay. That's, that's a good thing for a landowner.
Okay, any other comments on, this is the Billings wind turbine, two wind turbines. Okay.
Which we heard from his, his son is, his dream. Preston is eighty-seven, something like that, and-
Yeah.
Almost a lifelong-
I will say, he had one of the first passive solar installations in his home in the area. Um, so he was kind of forward-thinking on those issues. Okay, um, now, the-
Then there's a solar project.
Solar project.
Yeah, so, um, that one we have, um, much more time on. We, we got the, the forty-five day notice. It's a three-plus, um, megawatt project. It's a large one. Um, we had the, the developer at our planning commission meeting. Uh, he was originally thinking he would get the, what we, what I call the full-on application, uh, done in August, but he's now looking at this fall. So, we, we do have some time. We brought up, um, some concerns about the setbacks, especially along Route Seven. Um, didn't get a real positive response on that. Um, it sounded like, um, you know, he was making, trying his darndest to make this work economically, um, for him. He's buying the parcel from the Thomases, and will be doing the project. So, he is open to a site visit, so, um, if we want to still go that route, if we could get some suggested dates to him. Um, but I did, I, I, we all got the strong impression that he's not interested in increasing the setback on Route Seven at this point in time. Um, it's, it's a hundred feet from, you know.
Barbara, what's the requirement?
Uh, it's right at the state, at the state law requirement.
At a hundred feet, okay. And what, what would, what would allow us to, um, go beyond that, or to make that further back? I mean, are they, are they talking about screening between the edge of the, uh, panels in Route Seven with, you know, some shrubberies, some trees, something? I, I'm just curious what we would be in our favor if we were going to try to enforce something on, you know, you know, this person's property to make them do something differently?
It would have to be voluntary, you know, on, on the owner's part. Um, it's, it's kind of weird, and he couldn't answer this question. He wasn't sure of the answer. The, the screening along the Route Seven portion is not solid. There's some breaks there.
Yeah.
Uh, so, he, he wasn't sure of why that was.
Can you say you'd give back to us one more?
Yeah, yeah.
That was one of our big concerns with the Cold River Road projects, the, what the landscaping would look like. It looks like they've got a couple of things here, but then there's a whole, um, it looks like a tree line indeterminate, um, that is most of the project, and it looks like he just wants to leave it here. So it's kind of hard to read, and I'm glad he, he says he's getting back, because this doesn't really, yeah, yeah. Um, the other question was the payment in lieu of taxes, um, or the, and maybe you didn't get into it, but it would be something that the select board would. Um, and this is another developer in town recognizing that this will be taking land off the tax roll for town purposes, because I think the state is the one who taxes, and so we, we don't tax. And at least one other developer has, had made a proposal that in lieu of, you know, acknowledging the lost revenue, there was a payment upfront when the project went in, and it was fairly substantial, so.
Didn't get that far.
Yeah.
That might be just the cost of doing business.
Yeah, I mean, I, do you remember, I'm thinking it was like a hundred and thirty thousand.
It, it was quite a bit. It, there should be a record of that for what they did, and I, and I know that was from the second, um, Cold River Road project. Um, it, it was quite a bit. I think what they did is they figured, um, kind of what we would lose in taxes per year over, I don't know if it was the twenty years or something on that, you know, and, and they were looking at it not as developed land, but the taxes on the way it was as basically raw land there and what we were collecting. Um, so, you know, what we, I guess what we should have thought about at the time was coming up like, with a number per acre, and then we could just apply that to anybody that was, what might be doing this kind of a commercial operation, and, and that way you would have a fair way of handling it. So we could go back and try to figure that out, Mary. I mean, there's a record of it. We'll just have to backtrack a little bit.
And I remember the calculations. Well, I don't remember what they were, but I remember seeing the calculations. So, yeah, it was reduced to, there was something behind it. So, Bill, could you look and find those, please? Okay. Um, all right, so this is a work in progress. He's looking for a time for a site visit.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming the planning commission is interested in going? Okay. So, my suggestion, if it's okay with the select board, is you folks come up with a couple of dates that work for you and let us know, because it, it won't be a night that we're meeting, and we could join you if we, is that okay with the select board? It would be a Thursday evening, possibly.
It's, it's okay, Mary. Just keep in mind that the piece on Route Seven is planted, and there is corn there, and it's gonna be tough navigating.
Hadn't thought of that.
It's not, it's not an open field that we could walk through, so it's, it's gonna be a little, little tricky. I mean, you can look at some of it, I think, from Post Road and get an idea, and maybe from Route Seven, but you're not going, but, um, you, you, to actually traipse out in there is gonna be, uh, a little difficult right now. And yet, and the corn will be high enough, so you're not gonna get, you know, Kurt will be able to, Kurt will be able to see, because he's a little taller than the rest of us, but Sharon's gonna be in trouble.
Thank you for thinking of me, Joey.
I'll put Sharon on my shoulders.
There's the team.
You have, you could have the same experience if you go up to Kurt's aunt and uncle's and go through the maze. That's what this is gonna kind of be like.
Yeah, but this one's free. You gotta pay for theirs, yeah.
Yeah, I know. But at least up there, there'll be a path to walk in.
Well, yeah.
Okay. So you, you want to like, push that as far into the fall as possible, that site visit, and see-
Do, do they, do they chop the corn, or is it ear corn? How long does it stay up?
Shell corn. That gets, that gets picked, so.
Okay.
That'll probably be November.
Yeah.
It could be November before it's bare ground again.
Yeah.
All right, it's gonna be a while.
The other thing, the other thing that we could do, and we could ask the developer, because this technology is out there, is he could probably put together a small video, few minutes or ten or so from a drone, and show us the area so that we could get a, just a visual, and they could send that to us, and Bill could probably play it, and we could all see it. And that would give you probably as good a view of that as anything you want. Or even still pictures from a drone that would, would give it, um, would, would help show us, you know, how it relates to the power station, uh, the Army Reserve Building, Bob Moore's buildings, and, and, uh, the other properties there. So that's, that's something they probably should be able to do right off.
When I talked to him about renderings or anything like that, he objected because of the cost it would incur.
Really?
Yes.
Well-
Well.
He's gonna find out that that's gonna be a cost of doing business, because the Public Utility Commission's gonna want that information.
Yep.
I think.
And he might get to plan on doing it now.
Yep.
Hmm, hmm.
So either or, a video or some more site plans, or some more-
Yeah, I mean, we, we want to see what the impact is gonna be from town roads and, and Route Seven. So, that's a biggie. We have asked it of other developers, and we, we want the same information from him. Yeah.
I think I said, I'm not opposed to the project, but I think that if, if the person building these things, if they want to, um, do this, they, they have to provide the information the town, you know, asks for, so that we can make a reasonable judgment. And, and if we need to ask for things, we have to have some way of knowing how to go about, you know, how, what we want. So, um, I don't think this is too much to ask to come up with, to give us a view here, so we can see what's going on.
Right. Um, the last point I'm remembering from our energy planning discussions, once we hit our target goal, anything above, um, there was a certain level of scrutiny up to that point, but once we had enough energy being produced locally, there was a higher level of scrutiny. Remember that in our-
It's, it's one of those ten things at the end of the town plan that was added.
Yes.
Um, but I think, you know, in this current environment, and I mentioned this two weeks ago, where we're talking about all this renewable energy and using electricity for everything, um, I think the state, along with us, are gonna have to rethink these goals, because if we're gonna do what everybody wants to do, um, they're gonna, we're gonna have to figure out how to generate power. Uh, you know, the, the wind project, I'm really interested to see, you know, if that gets up and going, and what kind of data that shows as far as the ability to produce electricity day and night. Um, we all know that solar is only good when the sun's out, and, and then it's gonna be gone. And the storage and discharging of batteries, um, that, that hasn't been perfected yet. They're working on things like that. So, um, you know, I think some of the towns, the stuff we were thinking about five years ago in that town plan, uh, before we knew all of this emphasis on renewable clean ener, electric energy, um, we might have to rethink that a little bit. I always thought that that was a little discriminatory, that it's somebody that wanted to do a project that came in, you know, down the road after we met what the state said our goal was. I didn't, I didn't think that would be fair to people, and there might be a good challenge there in a court system that we've overstepped our bounds. But I think we should see what exactly the state is saying, and what, what would be prudent in a situation like this to start limiting it. Because if you start putting all these limits, and all kinds of towns do this, you know, we're, we're gonna be hurting for this clean renewable energy that we're all seeking. So, something to think about.
Yeah, point made, Joe, but I think it's actually in our plan. So we've got to address it, and if, as you say, the, the state standard has, has drifted away from what we put in, then we might have to amend it. But we should know what it is, and, um, and I'm wondering if the planning commission took a look at that.
Well, th- that's a work in progress with the, um, the Public Service Department.
Okay.
There's, yeah, there's quite a few moving parts to, um, adjusting all those numbers and getting new maps out of the resources. So that's, that should be, um, available this fall.
Okay. All right, so that will be, how often do we have to amend or approve a-
We adopt every eight years.
Eight years now, okay.
Yeah.
And the energy component is the same timetable?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, so we're, are we at the point yet of saying whether we're in or in this project, we have more time to decide and negotiate on things before we, are we in the forty-five day period for this? Is that-
Yeah, and, and that will, um, you know, essentially expire, you know, they gave their notice, and so they're, he's saying they're gonna need extra time.
Okay.
A few more months to get the full application.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then at that point, we can decide whether we want to participate as a statutory party.
You know, it's, it's always good to sit down with these people beforehand and try to work some things out.
Yes.
Work your concerns out bef, and not have to go to the PUC, uh, which is-
Expensive.
A courtroom setting and all that.
Nothing wrong with that.
No, no, I didn't mean that.
No, point taken, and that's why I think the, I'm glad you're taking a look at it, and those are some of the concerns that we have, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Keep us posted.
Okay.
And maybe keep this as a reminder to us, because we may not have this on our radar screen, so if you folks would, that would be good. Okay. Um, so that's two things, and if you look at, if I can find the agenda, here we are. Um, under action needed, that's the Post Road Solar Project. The board, um, just finished discussing that. There doesn't appear to be any action needed at this time, other than a possible site visit, more information on landscaping, and note to us to follow up on the payment in lieu of tax situation. Um, and Bill's gonna research that. Be under action needed is the Quarterline Road Wind Project, and it appears that we're not gonna take any position. It's a relatively small project, so that's taken care of. Also for planning commission, while Barbara is here, um, board to discuss the proposed short-term rental ordinance, and I put this on because, not that we're gonna go page by page, but I would like a sense from the select board, whether it's no, we're not pursuing anything on this, whether it's yes, we like just what the planning commission came up with, or something in the middle, like, uh, we should have some kind of registration form, but not quite so far as the regulatory. So, any, that's kind of why, while Barbara is here, while Dana's here, um, I kind of want some feedback. What direction do we give to the planning commission, who's been working on this, and then pass this to us?
So.
Kurt?
I'd make a motion that we do not pursue a short-term rental ordinance at this time.
I second it.
Okay, not even a registration? Okay, so you're, you're, you're shaking your head, but I, okay. So, do not pursue it this time. Okay, so you're 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 shaking your head, but I okay, so do not pursue it this time. Sharon seconded the motion. Discussion.
Yeah, I think we have to look.
I'll say that I I disapprove with that direction. I think that what we're asking is not that um regulatory, it's not regulatory at all. It's the information only. Um the costs that the town is asking for are minimal. Um, this is this is not exorbitant. Um you know, there's been all kinds of talk about well, we're going to put people out of business and people aren't going to be able to pay their taxes. If you've got a establishment in one bedroom, it's going to cost you a hundred dollars a year. If that's all the margin you're working on, you shouldn't be in business. So a hundred bucks a year is no big deal and the town will have a better handle on what's going on in the town. It is not intrusive. We're not in a money grab and there is nothing in that ordinance that says anything about Airbnbs and I was disappointed that that was the only focus during that whole last discussion because there is nothing in the ordinance that even mentions the word Airbnb. This is short-term rentals in general in the town of Rutland. It's a it's not that big a deal. It's it's like we just talked about other things, a small cost of doing business to be reputable, be in and all and and I'm in favor of what the uh Planning Commission has put together and I would stick with it.
Okay, Matt?
Yes, so um I think uh Mary, you you may want to comment because um going into this, we had two known votes against it um and we had Joe in favor of it. Um, so if you're against it, then maybe we don't need to continue the discussion. Otherwise, I'm afraid I'm the swing vote, much to my displeasure. And I have um I was leaning against it initially. I've started to swing back the other way, but I've got some questions and um a number of proposed uh edits um to it if we're potentially going forward with it, but I don't want to waste anyone's time. Um but I am I am prepared to go page by page if that's what we need to do.
Okay, um.
I like that.
It looks like a we're we're building up to a two-two swing and just to let you know, I mean, we could just vote on it, but frankly, I would vote in favor of keeping keeping or going with the ordinance in some fashion, but with probably some modifications. So um be happy.
I like I like Matt's idea. You know, we we can't I don't think we should just scrap it. I think we should work on it some more and and you know, that one lady that talked for the longest and she manages a hundred and fifty units and she had all the answers, but she didn't provide any. She said that this doesn't apply to a hundred different things and but she was just focused on the Airbnbs and and that's inappropriate because that's not what we're focusing on and and that whole discussion was only about that um that particular uh industry and 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 they're managed and regulated and we're not concerned about just them. We're we're it's there's other stuff going on and but it's not that big a deal. I I don't know. I so anyway, I think we should just keep come up with something.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote respecting that some folks probably want to go on the record on this one so that they can go back to the people they've been talking with. So the motion made by Kurt, seconded by Sharon, is that we do not pursue a short-term rental ordinance at this time. Are you ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed to the motion, please say nay.
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 Nay. So the motion is defeated. Is there any other motion at this time to give guidance to us and to the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I think we need to spend more time on this. I think I was a little taken aback with the woman that owns is buying up houses to do that um opposed to people that it's in their downstairs apartment. They're going to keep track of it. People that are using it as a moneymaker and it's not in their backyard, if you will, are not. So I think we need to do some more looking into it and and come up. I'm I'm not I'm not opposed or I just wanna I want to get it right, but I don't think we should be in business where people are buying up houses in Rutland Town um just to to do Airbnbs and it's not in their own home. We have a shortage of housing for people and that to me is the more important thing, that we leave that that open so that people have housing and not just an Airbnb to make money. That's just my take. So I think if we did more studying on this, maybe we'd come up with some better answers.
Maybe we'll take.
Sharon, in a way Sharon, what you're saying is that we should have a stricter ordinance that allows us to regulate what people are doing with properties they are buying and tell them they can't do it. We can't tell somebody they can move into town and buy three or four houses and turn them into short-term rentals. And that is what I thought everybody was against. That's a regulatory thing that the town is not asking for. This ordinance is just registration. We are not going to tell somebody that's going to buy whatever properties they can, turn them into Airbnbs, manage them, rent them out and make money. That is the American free enterprise way that we survive. People do things to make money and the town of Rutland is not in the business of regulating that and we have no way of stopping that. This ordinance will not do it unless we make it stricter than hell and when and I'm not going there. I'm not going to tell you as a landowner and a person that you can't buy a property, put it in two apartments and rent them out short-term whether it's through Airbnb. I'm I'm just not going to tell you you can do that with your landowner. Can't do it. We just want to know if you're doing it and that's what the ordinance is. So you gotta be, I think you're right. I think a joint meeting, we sit down with the Planning Commission, not on our regular night, not on their regular night, just a meeting to sit down and we do what Matt said. We start reading through this and we try to figure out what's good and bad about the portions and come up with it. The fees are not exorbitant, uh the registration process is not difficult and we are not saying Rutland Town is going to have thirty-seven units available and if you want to be the thirty-eighth, you got to jump through hoops, just like we're talking about with solar. We're we're not doing that. We're just saying if you're going to have one, we want to know about it. And and I think a joint meeting is the way to go next and I'll make that as a motion.
Okay, uh Joe makes is a motion that the short-term rental ordinance and and various iterations that may arise be looked at in a joint meeting of the Town Planning Commission and the the Select Board. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Matt. I let me ask Barbara, is this now you passed the ordinance to us. Um, how is the Planning Commission open to sitting down with us and trying to you know, go through it and revise it? Or would you prefer that since you pass it to us, we run with it?
I I think we would like the input.
Okay.
Thank you, Barbara.
Okay.
Thank you, Barbara.
There is your motion. Um, any further discussion? All in favor of the joint meeting on this issue, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Okay, so we'll have to have Bill do some calendar comparing, I guess.
Can I just put a thought in your head?
Yeah.
Um, I reached out to Kevin Brown, our attorney.
Yeah.
I didn't know he was on vacation.
Yeah.
But he was, but he still got back to me. I just, you know, so just in case things got scaled back here, um he had a lot to do with with the the ordinance drafting it. Um, you know, what his thoughts were and um he suggests any registry approach should require the owner to produce a public building permit from the Division of Fire Safety. Many owners do not realize that renting triggers the need to obtain a public building permit. So that was in the ordinance, having you have that as proof.
I mean, that's you know, that's getting drilling down and that's the sort of thing we would want to go over with you folks. So hold that thought, I guess, is what I'm saying.
My apologies.
Yeah, no, no.
No, you're doing a good job.
Yeah, um all of these things we need to have, you know, consider in our joint meeting. So we'll, let's see, we'll work with Bill and we'll try and find maybe a doodle poll. It's doodle poll time to see if we can get.
Kevin as well.
What's a doodle poll?
Oh, it's a um it's a me it's a meeting app that.
It's a it allows us to get, I'm going to give you five dates for a meeting. You pick one, Mary picks one, Kurt picks one, Bart like and it tells us all what everybody says. So.
Now I understand a doodle poll.
This seems complicated.
No, it's more like.
It sounds more complicated than it's.
No, it's really not that bad. You you give like ten dates and everybody weighs in and picks the dates that they can attend and you go with the majority.
Yep.
That's kind of what you do.
The computer tells you.
The computer tells you which.
As long as it's after, as long as it's six o'clock on and.
Yeah, okay, so so right away evening meeting.
Yeah.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
Alright, so that takes care of C for now. And yes.
Question, um I do have a marked up version of this um draft that if you like, I can send it around to maybe set the table for discussion.
Yeah, um so why don't you get it to Bill?
Okay.
And he can do that. And Barbara, any comments like from Kevin that we should be aware of, send those around as well? And the I think and probably in that same packet, the the proposed ordinance, the way the Planning Commission sent it to us.
So what what I I would make myself a note, what what I will do is I will add line numbers to the draft and I will make some sort of like comment sheet for everybody. So it's like your comment, line number one, here's your comment. So everybody has line numbers and we can come in when we say, when we have a group meeting because they, okay, my comment's about line number seven. So everybody go line number seven. We all know what we're talking about. So I can send that out to everybody so we can all make it easier.
Okay.
Yeah.
Add comments and.
You know, let's do that.
We can try.
We can try.
Will you circulate Matt's?
No.
Yes, yeah, that's that's part of it, yeah. Okay.
I'm just still hung up on the doodle poll.
You are going to be so pleased when you find out.
It's so fun.
Yeah, it's not a dog, Sharon.
It's not a dog. I'm just clarifying.
Alright, anything else for our Planning Commission chair? A big thanks to the Planning Commission. We dumped a lot of stuff on you and we continue to do so and we're really grateful for your work. So thank you.
She's up to it. You've done a good job, Barbara.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I was at the beach. That's what did it.
Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Uh, let's see what I got for you. Um, the weather's been decent-ish, so we've had a lot of groups come through. So we're starting with our groups now and that's going very well at the pool. The uh I'm still picking up the food for you for the townwide celebration. Just give me a hand up and that, yeah.
That's if that's tough.
Fine, that's fine. Yeah, I can drive up, pick up food. Um, been mowing a lot around the raindrops. Um, so that's going well. We started the disc golf back nine, um and that's going very well too. Our construction for our mountain bugging trails will take place probably beginning of August, middle of August, and that will start. That got delayed by two fifty, so but that's on on track. When do you want me to hang the sign up for townwide celebration? Do you want me to start first part of August or? I mean, I don't want somebody to rip it down, not that they would, but.
Yeah, no, I think that's appropriate. It's a month away, so we basically need to probably step up the, I got to get back in touch with Kamutas. I had sent them the order, but I just want to make sure they've got it all and they're ready to go. So.
Okay, not a problem.
Um, and all of the other players' parts.
You're doing the peppers and onions that are already. Okay, thank you.
What do you mean, thank you? I was the one who cooked them last time.
I helped.
I'm doing no cooking. That would be you two again.
Yeah.
Been nominated.
They're pretty darn good cooks.
I didn't say you weren't. That's why you're back.
Yeah.
Kind of like when a coach comes, I don't let them leave until their kid age out. So you are designated.
You mean, we haven't aged out yet?
Dave, would you agree with that?
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, we go, look at that. See, we work very well together when we have to.
Yeah, speaking of which, can you can you come up with a place to put the bench? You said you had two choices, right?
Yeah, we're gonna, I'm gonna go up and see Mike and we'll we'll firm it up.
And we do need to have a committee meeting, Matt, at some point and it doesn't have to be before this meeting. It can be next week. The sooner the better to get some stuff ironed out. Nothing major, nothing, just we haven't had one.
Okay.
Um, and I want to make sure we get things rolling.
Yep.
Uh, other than that, um they came back and did some more clearing of the land and it looked really nice. And then the rain really showed me how much I need to rake it away and put in grass seed. So.
More mowing. Lucky you.
It's I'd rather mow than have what was.
Invasives, we call them.
Yes, they were quite invasive.
Oh, my God.
Now gone, which is good. So it's only going to make the park nicer in the end. Other than that, I don't that much unless, oh, the signs came in. Or it's in my truck. I should have brought it in. I didn't. So if you didn't know, someone broke all the signs that Mary and the Boy Scout and I don't remember. It might have been who was it that painted them Dana, the signs? Was it?
Who was the Eagle Scout? It was an Eagle project.
Was it um, no, no, it was his brother.
Alex.
Alex did all that work. So
Yeah.
I took pictures of the remaining um signs that I had that were kind of still okay.
On the paths.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, somebody had destroyed them.
Fern and I were taking a walk and that was shortly after it was reported and it was really heartbreaking to see what had happened.
There were a lot of people who worked on that.
Yeah, and you know, you look at it and you say why.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I I have my suspicions, but I'm from what people have told me. But anyway, regardless, so now they are an aluminum composite. I took a picture of the remaining pieces that I had. They touched them up. So it looks just like slate, but it doesn't break like slate. I had them put some blue trim around and it just made it pop a little bit more, but the original, it is the original design. So I thought that worked out really well that they were able to do that for us. So I just picked them up today and I will be putting them up in the next couple of days. So they will be back up. Um, and they shouldn't get broken.
Yeah, I I I can just see somebody with maybe the whomevers who did it before with a baseball bat.
Oh.
And then then hitting aluminum instead of slate and the reaction will be.
Yeah, or throw it on a rock and it doesn't do anything and then they get all frustrated, but I, yeah, anyway.
I like it when the baseball bat comes back and hits them.
Yeah.
Especially at mailboxes. That does, that makes me feel real good.
Any other questions for our Town Rec Director?
I I have a just two things for Mike. One is I had the opportunity to be at the pool with my granddaughter during her lessons and I want to congratulate Mike on a very well-run operation. He has a really good staff up there. Um, they do it, they do a really nice job and he pointed out the area that he had reclaimed um so that he'll have more lawn tomorrow. And the other comment is the grass is growing now, Mike.
I I I was on it for four hours today. I snuck it in and I'll be on it again tomorrow morning. So.
I I think his problems up there were drought-related or lack of rain or moisture-related and nothing else because we did have a relatively dry winter and spring and now that has turned around and if we find the individual that thought we were in a drought and prayed for rain, we should have a long lengthy talk with them.
Well, I I do know that the the field, I the fields were inundated with grubs too.
Yeah.
That I know for a fact. So the combination of we we got it right, it's coming back, will, that's part of our meeting is getting it in our long-range plan of continuing to keep it green um and protecting it because it is really much nicer when it's green than when it's the table color. So, yeah.
Rutland Town seniors?
Rutland Towns, oh my God, Rutland Towns seniors. How could I forget? I'm a senior. Um, Tuesday. Don't go oh, Tuesday, eleven o'clock at the pool this coming Tuesday. It won't get out other than.
Twenty-fifth, right?
This.
No, wait a minute.
Tuesday. This coming Tuesday.
Okay.
The twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Next Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, this couple, however you talk in. Next Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, this couple, however you talk in your language, next Tuesday is the seniors luncheon at the pool at eleven o'clock. We have half the way beef as we had for all the years we've done it up there. We'll have hot dogs, the guards are making sides. Um, we have ice cream and we have drink and we have chips for everybody, so.
Very nice.
If all goes well, I'm assuming they've had pretty good numbers lately, probably thirty or forty.
Pretty close to thirty.
So that's awesome.
Yeah.
And then all department heads and their employees are more than welcome to.
Do we still need to let you know?
It would be really nice to know how many, so I can let, Byron has a rough idea, but I wanna give him a, a better idea so that nobody goes, you know, without a burger, that wants a burger.
Yeah.
They can have my burger.
Hmm.
I, I donate my burger.
I'm gonna try and make it.
I mean, I kind of penciled you all in.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then I'll just make you feel guilty when you don't show up.
Yeah, I know you will. Yes, you will.
I mean, the seniors are wonderful. So other than that, lessons stop this week. Uh, it's the last, Friday's the last day and then we'll just open regular twelve to seven.
Boy, where did summer go?
Don't, don't, it's still there. We're good, we're good. Any questions for me?
No, I don't dare open my mouth to you.
You're more than welcome to.
Oh, no.
All right.
Not, thank you very much.
No problem, thank you.
All right. Dave Seer, Rutland Town Road Commissioner.
Coming at. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Uh, last couple of weeks, we finished the paving on Flori Heights and Travis Terrace.
Looks good.
Came out really nice.
Yeah.
I think if we don't pave anything, we won't have to listen to complaints, like when they pave past the driveway and like five minutes later, they're calling saying, when are you gonna fill my driveway? It's brutal. Just saying. That was. We're gonna, um.
You'll get used to it, Dan.
What was that?
I said you'll get used to it. It'll go away, you know, it just goes.
Not really, no, it was, when I was in my former life and I never really got used to it. It's. Um, but anyway, those streets all came out really nice. Um, we're still kind of plugging away at, uh, post-road sidewalk. We lost most of, uh, last week to just storm response. We didn't really have anything. We had a one tree down over here by the trestle.
Saw you taking that one out, yeah.
Um, and then we, from the Thursday night, uh, rain, wind, storm, we had a few limbs came down in a couple of different neighborhoods. We went out and cleaned those all up uh, Friday. And then, uh, yesterday we went out and kind of cleaned up the bigger stuff that we couldn't get on Friday. Um, the MS four thing, we went out and did the inventory on everything that they had that they suggested we do. And now we've got, because of the storm, we've got some other culverts that are plugged. So I've got A1. Um, as soon as I could get in with them is August seventeenth.
Did we get a camera?
We did.
Okay, and A1 is coming into.
Clean culverts. Well, they got it, they got to suck out, I forgot how many basins that were on the MS four list.
Okay.
And then we've got a, a three or four, uh, probably half a dozen, uh, culverts that are took on water or mud, grit, whatever. They're just partially full and I just want to get them clean while I, I'm, I gotta pay for them for the day, so I might as well use them for the day.
Okay.
Um, Walt, well, and I can, I'll, I'll talk to Carrie like you suggested. Well, Walt is back in town. He was, uh, mowing for Menden for the last couple of weeks, um, for several reasons. The biggest one is last year we sent the mower to Menden and they kept it for the month of July and probably used it. I don't know how many times they used it, but they didn't use it for the month of July.
Yeah.
So, uh, we figured a way to kind of do an end run here a little bit is to, and they were agreeable. We're just gonna bill them for Walt's time.
Okay.
Um, they're partial, they're third owners in the tractor anyway, so that's not a thing. Um, so we're gonna, uh, bill them for his time and he's, he came back into town today, so we're gonna gain two weeks that we lost last year and he already went around and did like a, like a single pass on everything in town. And it doesn't look like he even touched it, because it's, it's just growing with all the rain and heat and everything. It's, so we're, we're two weeks to the good anyway.
Uh, before I forget, and I don't know if this is your thing or whether I should just take care of it, but somebody dumped a full bag of trash right on the side of Creek Road and if he hits and he, it's right where he would be mowing if he comes through.
Where, where about?
Uh, right, um, just north of my house. Across from the, the old B lock barn.
The southy overpass?
Yep. Did you put it there?
Never tell.
Yeah, the rain dance.
I got, I got better places to put it.
Okay, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Thursday evening at six o'clock, there's a highway committee meeting with the town of Clarendon. Um, be there, be square. And our hy.
Grab the B square.
Our, uh, hydraulic study for Stratton Row culvert is back. Needs to be replaced, surprise!
Oh.
So, uh, we head into the next phase of that, which is, I spoke to Robert Clark yesterday. Um, I guess we need, I was gonna bring it up at the committee meeting. Uh, figure out how we want to pay for engineering, because that's kind of the next step. And then apply for a grant, pay to get that replaced and, or I'm still, you know, probably a couple of years out from doing that.
Can it wait that long?
It can, I mean, not that I'm superstitious, but.
Yeah.
Keep everything crossed, we should make it.
Okay.
Don't change us.
Yeah.
Not me. And, um, again, post-road, that's where we spent the last couple of days and that's where we'll spend, as long as the weather works for us, we'll just keep plugging away there. See if we can put that thing behind us.
Thanks. Okay, questions for our road commissioner? Real quiet. Okay, thank you very much, Dave.
You guys did.
Just to thank you, Dave, for, uh, your guys going out and you taking care of storm damage and being available, uh, you know, mother nature keeps being unfriendly and you guys seem to be rising to the task, but I appreciate that.
That's what we do, so thank you.
Okay, Marsha Chaffee, town head lister.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, well, the good news is we got our grand list lodged.
Yay, congratulations.
Thank you. I, I couldn't have done it without my, without my team, without, um, Marie and Jack. They have been invaluable to helping me get the grand list lodged. And the grievance notices are all out, they're all over town at the five different, uh, you know, five different places that they need to be. Um, so, um, the, uh, grand list actually slightly went, went up this year. And the, um, uh, the, we lost quite a few business personal property, um, um, businesses and that, um, that kind of, kind of worried me at the beginning, but with putting in twenty-five new businesses this year, we kind of even everything out.
Good.
So it's, it's amazing that, um, I have to give Gil Gantit a kudos because she has been shaking the bushes and getting out there and finding all of these new businesses and it's been, it's been really, it's evened out our property and business personal property. So, um, and I don't believe that the, um, you know, the, um, uh, real estate, um, beautiful is going to be go, going anywhere near, I think it's gonna be about par for what we had last year, so.
Good.
Anyway, yep, very happy with everything that, that transpired this year and, uh, looking forward to a good year.
All right, well, thank you and your team, Marsha, for your help with that.
Thanks, Marsha.
Yeah.
You're welcome. It's been a pleasure.
Questions from select board members. We do have, and, and we'll do this with Carrie, too, who's, um, up in a minute. We've got to set a meeting to set the tax rate, so that, we're looking at August first. Um, it's, you're usually not involved at that point, Marsha, because you've passed everything to, to Carrie, run the calculation sheet that.
Um, our, our grievance, grievance hearings are going to be, um, held on, um, July thirty-first. And, uh, hopefully, hopefully we won't get any, but, uh, you know, until that time, we don't know.
Okay. Okay, any questions? All right, thanks again, Marsha.
You're welcome.
All right, Chris Clark, town fire chief.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chris.
Uh, it's been kind of a busy month. Um, we've had quite a few calls with the storm. I know Marty talked earlier and Marty did a fantastic job helping us all out that night. Um, not really, I can't remember how many storm-related calls we went on, but it was a few. Uh, the last two days, we sent a couple of trucks to cover Rutland City while they were participating in the funeral services. So we spent two days, couple hours each day helping them out. Uh, a week or two ago, we got all our hose testing done and our ladder testing for the year. We did lose five lengths of five-inch hose, so I'm gonna be ordering five lengths of that here and shortly, probably this week. Um, we got all our bottles for our air packs hydro-tested, so that means we've had them for five years already. And they're good for another ten. Uh, so probably in another five years, we're gonna have to start thinking about uh, purchings, purchasing some new ones, because the last time we bought them, we bought them all at once. So I, it was pretty expensive, so I don't think we want to do that again in ten years from now, so we'll have to come up with a way to start replacing some sooner than later, a little out of time.
Okay.
And the last thing I have is I have a new member I was hoping you'd approve tonight. His name is Evan Gustafson. Uh, lives on East Mountain View Drive in Rutland Town. Uh, Dale and I met with him on, uh, July eighth, and we think he'll be a good fit, so hopefully tonight you guys will approve it and we'll have a new member.
Hey, Rutland Town resident, good. Is he a, a junior member or a regular member?
Uh, he'll be a regular. He's thirty-eight. He doesn't have any training, but he's willing to go through all the schooling.
Great.
Soon as that starts up, we'll get him enrolled and.
Good. Hey, I'm curious, did this, um, come from some of the recruitment work you folks were doing?
It, it actually did. He came down to the open house we had and filled out an application and very interested. He's not from, I think he's from Washington DC, he said, um, so he hasn't really lived here that long, but he's really interested and wants to learn.
Good, terrific, thank you.
Definitely.
Motion is in order for Evan Gus, Gustafson as a new member of Rutland Town Fire Department.
Shall move.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded, discussion?
Chris, um, I, I'm, I'm guessing that all the necessary, um, preparations, background and all that's all completed, all okay?
Uh, yes, it was completed and nothing found.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, all in favor of, um, Evan as a new member, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion's unanimous, so welcome him for us and thank you, Chris. This is good.
Um, I will leave this at the office so you guys can put your signatures on it, uh, before I make him a new file.
Yes, please.
Just one other thing, I forgot to mention it last time I was here, um, let's see, I believe we had three new members complete the level one and two fire class through the state, so now we have three more, uh, senior interior firefighters with all the necessary training, so we're moving forward.
So. Good. Thank you. It sounds like we're, we're in good shape and please thank all of your members for all of the response work they did over the past, well, two weeks, because I know they were involved in, and, and the, the work for our neighbors in the city as well, so thank you.
I will thank them. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any questions?
No questions, Mary, but two things. Um, first, uh, I want to thank Chris and the department for representing our town as well as they did for the last two weeks. And the second thing is, are you making any progress, um, in your endeavors to find a home for your vehicles, um, during the construction of the new station? How's that going?
I, it's, it's going slow. I do have a couple of calls into some, uh, some folks. I really don't want to tell you who until I get the A, okay. Yeah, we're, uh, we're still looking, but nothing definite at the moment, but we have some good ideas.
Okay, because I think you're running out of time.
I, I believe you're right. I'm not sure what time the starting date is, but it's, I'm sure it's coming up soon.
Yeah, I think that's all dependent on, um, the delivery of the building, so they'll work backwards from that, so hopefully once Dick knows that, um, he can give you a heads up as to when he wants to get going.
All right, well, we'll be ready.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, Carrie Clark, town clerk and treasurer.
Good evening.
Hi, Carrie.
Hi, um, let's see, this is our slow time during, uh, the year for my office, which is nice. Um, it will soon be picking up here, probably toward the end of July, beginning of August. I say that because our tax rate will be set and I'll be able to print off our new tax bills for the year. Having said that, um, I know we have to discuss the dates for that. Is that something you want to do now?
Yes, let's do that. So under action needed, if you look under item D, board to discuss setting the tax rate on August first. Um, so August first is a regular select board meeting. Um, usually setting the tax rate doesn't take too long. It's, but there's, it, I'm thinking maybe if we met at five-thirty to do that, is that possible? Matt, does that work?
Let me check all of my calendars here.
Okay. Um, we do have to concentrate on this and, and so having a whole bunch of people in the room isn't necessarily a good thing, but of course it's open to the public, so they're welcome, they're welcome to come and see what we do with their department budgets, for example. Um, and there is a print-off sheet that Carrie does. So if you, if you want to participate, but you think you may not, you may be zooming in, we'll have to let Carrie know. So she can send the, um, the worksheet to you, because it, it's kind of driven by that. Okay.
The time looks fine for me.
Okay, so let's set the tax rate on August first at five-thirty.
Sounds good.
I'll take a motion for that, I think.
Shall move.
Motion's made. Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, then we'll go into our regular motion carries. Um, we'll go into our regular select board meeting at six. So, okay, good. Thank you, Carrie. So, oh, I did notice that you have a BCA meeting at ten o'clock next Tuesday. Are we going to be done in time to get to the seniors picnic up at Northwood?
You're actually reading mine, that's the second thing I was going to say. Um, didn't really realize there was a, a senior thing going on that day. So, um, I mean, we could certainly bump it back to nine o'clock if, if that sounds better. Um, or we can move it all together. Um, it is where we're talking about the voter list and all of the challenged voters that we are going to approve, so it may take some time. Totally up to you guys.
When you say sometime, what, what does sometime mean based on past experience?
Um, so the voter checklist is pretty extensive and I send it out usually in digital format, um, where you can review the list and then, um, and then, um, give recommendations of who you think needs to be challenged off of that list. And I usually take input from everyone. So, um, I, I, I would hope it wouldn't go past a couple of hours, but I think a couple of hours would suffice.
I don't think it's, I, I don't recall it ever taking a couple of hours, Carrie.
Okay, I've seen one before, so.
Yeah. And it's the only thing on the agenda, right?
That's the only thing, yes.
Yeah, this is Board of Civil Authority, so it's not really up to us, but I was just curious about the timing, so.
Um, if you have engagement at eleven o'clock, I would assume that ten o'clock is cutting it close.
Well, yeah. It's the other end of town too, yeah.
What's that?
Well, it's, it's ten o'clock here and eleven o'clock at the other end of town.
Right, right. I can certainly move it a different day. I can send out an email tomorrow.
Okay, well, it's up to you. We're, it's not, not our, our, um, not us in particular, because we're just part of the BCA. We're not it.
That's okay, I'll take, I'll send out an email.
Okay.
Um, Mary, did you just say we have to hold meetings at both locations?
No, I was just saying if we had a Board of Civil Authority meeting here at ten, getting up to Northwood at a picnic. Um, I, I guess, you know, you're, you may not qualify Matt as a Rutland Town Senior, but um, it's pretty exciting to some of us who are, so, you know, we, we don't like to crowd too many things into our schedule.
I know, it can be daunting.
Okay. Carrie, anything else?
No, that's all for tonight.
All right, and thank you very much. Questions from select board members? Joe?
Nope, I'm good. Thanks, Carrie.
Welcome. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, next, Mike Delahanty, if he's on?
No Mike.
No Mike, all right. Um, Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board.
Just a couple of things and we can finish record time.
Don't, don't change it, Phil.
Um, so two contracts, um, one from Johnson Energy for our annual fuel contract and one from Brookfield Service for our annual generator maintenance.
Okay. So let's start with our, yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Well, I read it over. I was going to move that we accept the Johnson Energy contract for fuel for the next heating season, September 1st to twenty-twenty-three to May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four at the, uh, given rate.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Um, the rate is of I think he did this wrong.
Forty. Forty cents per gallon over the energy cost on that day of delivery.
Yeah, it's forty cents over rag.
Yeah, no, it's, okay, I, I see the, but the, anyway, he didn't need to put the cents in there, the word cents in there. Okay. We, we had this happen on a, on a warning for the town report and the police department ended up with, what, two hundred and forty dollars and they should have had like twelve thousand or, I don't know.
Twelve million or two million down though, we thought we'd get a hell of a.
Yeah, yeah, so we're careful about wording, but anyway.
Yep.
Um, so maximum of forty cents per gallon over Johnson Energy cost on day of delivery with a maximum capped rate of two dollars and nine, nine, nine cents for the contract period. Um, today's rate is two dollars and eight, five, nine. That's a reference, so that doesn't sound too bad, really. Motion's made and seconded. Discussion? Oh, um, Joe, could your motion include, please, that I get to sign as chair if we approve it?
Yeah. Yes, you may. Um, so just my only comment is, is we've, we've gone with Johnson for a number of years and it's mostly due to the fact they are the only ones that, they give us a pretty good rate, but they're the only ones that'll cap the price at a, um, given dollar figure, which is pretty nice. I think it's a risk on their part, but it's pretty nice that they do that almost every year.
Yeah. Okay. Very satisfied with them. Um, all right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Unanimously. Okay. Next. Brookfield Service, this is the maintenance agreement for the generators.
Five of them.
See attached list, and there isn't one.
Oh, it's, it's just our four generators.
Okay, all right. Um, so the four generators are.
Five generators. It's, um, the substation on Post Road, the town school, the two fire stations and here.
That's five.
Yes, it was five, it was five, it was five.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, do, do we have to vote on, uh, Program One or Program Two or just one or the other?
It's, it's, we do pro, we have traditionally done and we budgeted for Program Two where they come twice a year to do everything and it's necessary.
Okay. I would move that we accept Brookfield's, um, proposed, uh, maintenance contract for Program Two at four thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars or four thousand and ninety-nine dollars if prepaid by the twenty-eighth of this month. Um,
Okay.
Yep.
Motion's been made and seconded. Um, it looks like it requires one signature on this, so if you could amend your motion to include Chair to sign?
I'll move.
Okay. You're okay with that, sure?
Yes.
Alrighty, discussion. I remember the year we didn't do
Yeah.
Maintenance, and that was a really bad thing because we needed the generator, I think, at the school and it
Didn't work.
Didn't work. It was, it was a bad, bad thing.
Oops.
Okay, any other discussion, Joe?
No, only that a little regular maintenance makes mechanical things very happy.
It certainly does. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. No opposition.
Yep. And the last thing I have is the state is moving on to the next phase of the energy research grants, the MERP.
Oh, yeah.
Energy Resilience Program. Uh, so we have put in the buildings, they asked, asked traditional information. Um, in talking with someone at the planning commission, uh, we have submitted the new public safety building as one of the sites because there is, there is the opportunity to get funding to pay for the energy efficiencies in the new building as it's being constructed. So we have put that building in for consideration as well to possibly get some funding to, to pay for parts of that already. So, um, we, this went in Friday, so we haven't heard anything back yet, but
Right.
Yep, so we put in town hall, highway garage and new building.
How much would we save if we got something for the new building?
We don't know. It, that, that addition, because originally new construction was not included and now it is, so. Again, and they ask for things like mechanical engineer, mechanical drawings, engineer drawings for all these buildings. And he's like, they don't, this is building and general services for the state who's used to having new construction, which has all these things. He's like, they're not realizing they're dealing with hundred, two-hundred-year-old buildings from town, so they're stopping some, so. We're still working our way through this process, but we put it all in and we're gonna, now, now we're, now we're waiting. Uh, also, I haven't heard back from VHB yet. We did the, um, the contract for the extra work on the service road. And they have not, he, he said, oh yeah, I'll get you a contract and we haven't heard anything, so.
They could be really busy right now.
They could be really busy, but this was, this was weeks and weeks ago, so.
If you could sort of.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, we, we, it just, we haven't heard back from you.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, that's, that's all I got.
Oh, wow. All right. And, and in our packet, those are all taken.
That was it, yeah, that was, was.
All right, um, so I, did I have you put on our desks the information on the property transfer or was that me just carrying it over?
I did not, I did not get anything from you on that.
Okay, all right. Um, just, and I think most of you know this, but just to, um, update, as, as you probably know, the Cortina Inn has changed hands. Um, moving from Tulsi Rudrush Raksha Hospitality LLC to, did I do this right?
Yep.
Yeah, to ARD Realty LLC. Um, the common principal that they have is, um, Anil Sachdev, who was, um, you know, listed as a principal in both of them. So we, we, you know, I think I've mentioned this to most of you. I wanted you to be aware of it. It did change hands for, um, the real estate for five million dollars. It was, uh, property transfer tax return. And the personal property, uh, was six million, four hundred fifty-one thousand. So, uh, it appears to be at least on that level, an arms-length transaction. Um, but I, we still, and Carrie's on, maybe she can tell us. We did not receive the full amount from the Cortina for the month of June. We did receive a prorated check and is it correct that we haven't received any money from the new entity either to make up the difference for June or for the full month of July? Yeah. Okay, so it, she, she hadn't received that money as the last time I checked, so she.
So, Mary, you and I talked about, you and I talked about this, uh, ten days or twelve days ago. And I think the rest of the, rest of the board would agree at this, that this is a ploy by the ownership to get out of the agreement they made with us last fall. And that the new company is going to say, and I'm sure that this is driven by legal advice, that if they changed owner or changed the company, even though the principles are pretty much the same, that the agreement we made would no longer be binding with a new thing, and I think we're going to have to go through the process again. Um, the amount of money that they paid, I think it was around seventy-two thousand to the state or somebody is three and a half months of what, um, we would have gotten from them. So they probably figured that was cheaper than continuing the project. Um, sounds like to me they're going to continue to do just what they're doing down there and I guess it means we're going to expend some more money with our attorney to see how we're going to get back to where we were because you, I do not believe we will ever see another check from this new company because they're just going to say we don't owe you any money because we didn't make any agreement with you.
Um, it, it, you could be absolutely right. We, we don't know what their motive is. Um, I do know that we've provided this information to town council and we are still awaiting, um, the ruling from the advisory ruling from the, um, except we're not supposed to call it that, from the environmental court judge. Once we get that information, we'll, and when Kevin gets back from his vacation, we'll, um, bring him on and have a discussion about next steps on this and see where we are as to payments. Um, I will note on the transfer tax return that under type of building construction, it's noted as hotel, motel and not anything else, so. That's interesting.
Yeah, you know that I wouldn't believe nor trust these folks as far as I could throw them.
So noted.
They never put the fence up. They, like I said the last time, it's a breach of contract. Um, you know, a lot of us that work for people, you know, Kirk can attest to this, you go out and you work for somebody and you sign an agreement and they hold your toes to the fire and we have been unable to with these folks and it's discouraging and disappointing that, um, this is, uh, people that want to do business in our town. Um, they, they need to either straighten up or do something else, but this is, it's the most aggravating thing we've had to deal with, I think, in the la, in my seven, eight years here. This, this is probably the worst thing we've ever dealt with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's very frustrating, very. And the spinoff is just horrendous all around.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so that's a bit of information. Um, and I think that concludes what I had. Does anybody else have anything else that they want to bring up? Like an executive session, just for the fun of it?
I was looking at motion to adjourn.
Well, if you want to say that out loud and make it a motion. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. Um, non-debatable. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.